I invite you to join with me in the invocation. Dear Lord, we come to you in prayer asking for guidance in a time when we celebrate the freedom that people of our nation enjoy and expect. We ask for your protection for all people, our military and our leaders. In times of concern, we ask for acceptance and love of all individuals as you have created us as equal. Let us move beyond hatred and discord and show respect to everyone. Make us the eyes and ears of the community so that we may hear and see what is needed and let us make decisions that encourages all to help one another. Lord, we ask this prayer in your name. Amen.
Amen.
We have a very lengthy agenda tonight, so we're going to move quickly as we can. First, we'll start with special presentations. Number two, presentation of Platinum Award for Reliable Public Power, RP3, from the American Public Power Association and Public Power Award of Excellence for Low Wholesale Power Costs. Roy Jones, the CEO of Electric Cities, is going to make this presentation. Roy, you want to come up? Roy, after you make a few comments, I'm going to actually bring up the staff and you can make the presentation to them.
Sounds great. And I do want, you know, while I make, I hold these two lectures, folks consume. The first presentation I want to make is a presentation from Electric Cities. And a little bit of context here, back in 2016, as we kind of stepped back and started looking at what are the issues that we should be focused on in the next three to five years in the public power communities, we came up with what we called our five strategic priorities, of things we ought to be focused on. And those were, as we think about workforce development and planning issues, as we see lots of folks beginning to retire, newer generation of workers coming into the workforce, making sure that they're getting trained, getting trained, you know, how to manage the system safely. The other one was wholesale power supply costs. You know, wholesale power supply has always been a critical piece of the public power communities and making sure we keep those wholesale power costs as low as we can and make sure that they are competitive and doing things to make them even more competitive. You know, a lot of folks don't realize that Albemarle owns its own electric system and that the rates are set right here and it gives you lots of flexibility and lots of authority to set those rates and be able to attract those businesses, help businesses expand that are already located here in Albemarle. So wholesale power supply cost is a big component of that and making sure that we continue to drive those costs down and communicate the value of having, you know, your own local electric distribution system. You know, as we looked at a lot of the communities, you know, folks needed to reinvest in their infrastructure and I'll talk a little bit about the investments that y'all are making here. So you are, you know, from a grid modernization, making those critical investments in your grid to make sure that it does continue to remain reliable and operate efficiently. And then lastly, it's kind of this whole mindset of continuous improvement and not becoming complacent, always driving for excellence and striving to do better. I know we've got a great partnership with y'all with a lot of the software hostings and things that we do to be able to share those costs and those savings and kind of share those best practices, if you will, amongst those cities that are using that software. I'm pleased to be able to say that this is an award from Electric Cities that I'm presenting to Albemarle tonight, and I think clearly it could be in any one of the categories that I just named, but specifically, as we look at your wholesale power supply cost and the things that you're doing to manage that critical component of your cost is the wholesale power supply cost. You know, as you think about things like rebates for folks that are wanting to put, you know, all electric in their homes, heat pump, you know, rebates, that's a critical component to help folks have the incentive to move into that all-electric heat pump rebate, that heat pump, as opposed to maybe a natural gas or propane-fired system. So doing things like that that boost your electric sales here in the community. I know that you guys have changed out a lot of your lighting in the main areas, main roadways in Albemarle and putting in LED lights and I would think that, you know, most folks in the community, when you see how much brighter and nicer and cleaner looking those lights are, that's a fantastic investment, but it also lowers your energy cost as well because they use less energy, just like the LED lights in your home use less energy than that incandescent bulb. Then, as we also think about, you know, some of the more critical things that you've done on your community, you know, you guys have got a significant load management program. So being able to go in and clip those peaks each month and reduce that demand charge saves you money from a wholesale power supply cost perspective. So as the agency is sending your wholesale bill to you, those load management things that you're doing to reduce those peaks also help save money and keep those dollars here in the community of Albemarle. You know, probably one of the most significant things, I know that we have had a lot of conversations about the new delivery point, delivery point number three, and the capital improvement that's been made there, and I will tell you, it's fantastic because now you've not only got another delivery point, but you know, if you look at it from a reliability perspective, being able to attract and retain those businesses and being able to show them your reliability numbers, and I'll talk a little bit more about that one here in just a moment. But, you know, the new delivery point that's been built, I mean, you can carry the load, you know, so if you lose the other delivery points, you're going to be able to switch over your load and be able to continue to provide power to the businesses, you know, and it's important when, you know, downtown businesses, lunch hour, restaurants, people out, you know, in some of the shops and stores, they can't afford to have the outage because when you have an outage, people just go home. They don't go shop, you know, so those dollars aren't getting spent in the community. And then lastly, another critical component that you guys have done is you've upgraded the system from 4 KV to the 24 KV, which that in and of itself is going to allow, you know, for future load growth. Once again, it reduces the losses on the system. So all the things that your electric department, your customer service, your finance, your IT, all these things working together are components that go into why we are recognizing you all in your wholesale power supply cost and all those things you're doing to control those costs. So congratulations to all the staff that are out there and the things that you do to help them that have received this award this evening. So thank you.
Thank you. You want to bring them up now or you want to do the other one, do them both at the same time?
Do the other one. Do them both at the same time. For this one, this is the, and I'm going to try to say this because this is a mouthful. It is the Reliable Public Power Provider Award. I know. It's called the RP3. I can say that a whole lot easier. And this is a national recognition. This is not Electric Cities. This is the American Public Power Association, APPA. APPA has over 2,200 public power communities that are members of this national trade association. And they've implemented a program of 2005 where they come in and they assess the utility and how the utility is reinvesting in its employees and its system. So they look at things like the reliability, the reliability numbers, and there's lots of engineering technical measures that they use to measure that. They also look at workforce, you know, training and making sure that a lot of the employees are getting trained as we were talking about earlier. And then they also look at it from, you know, an economic development perspective, you know, being able to attract and retain those jobs in the communities. And so they step back and they look at these communities and of the over 2,200 communities, they identify, you know, what they consider to be the best in class, the leaders of that group. Well, there's 234 public power communities out of that 2,000 that are being recognized by the American Public Power Association as being an RP3 community. And y'all are being awarded the platinum level this year, and it's actually good for three years. So when you get this award, it's an award that will carry on for the next three years. You know, lots of benefits from this, you know, as you talk about, you know, attracting and retaining businesses, you know, being able to point to awards like this that are nationally recognized awards and you all being a platinum level member. I will tell you, when we go to New York and we visit with the rating agencies and we talk about the 19 members in Agency One, this is one of the questions they ask us. They ask us, so even the rating agencies in New York know about this award, and they ask us, well, how many of the 19 communities are RP3 recipients? It makes a difference. So congratulations once again to the staff. And just to show you what this award looks like, this is the award from the American Public Power Association, and I'm pleased to be able to have presented this to you all tonight on their behalf.
Mike, would you bring all of your electrical staff up and your collections, customer service, all?
Roy, why they come and how many of the 19 communities did receive the RP3?
I gotta check on the number. I think it's, I'm gonna say all of the 19.
In Electric Cities, of the 19.
Of the 19.
That narrows it down even more, does it not?
Yeah, Roy, get on up there at the front where we can get you in the picture too. That's all right. We can.
Yeah, they are used to dealing with.
Shaun, you do what you need to do to get the picture. Thank you to all of our staff for what you do and help us win this award. Item number three, we're going to move to the August 6 meeting. We've got a crew working right now and they cannot get here to the meeting, so we're going to move that to the August 6 meeting. Number four, approval minutes. Consider approval of the June 11 regular session, June 11 closed session number one, June 11 closed session number two, June 25 adjourned session, and June 25 closed session minutes.
Over approval?
Motion by Councilmember Townsend.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hughes. Further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Next, we're going to move into our public hearings. The first is to consider a resolution to declare city land for economic development and a lease agreement. Mark, you want to come up? Where yet? Council, this is going to be a little unusual. I'm going to ask if there's anyone in the audience that would like to make comments at this time, and if not, we're going to continue this to the end of the meeting because we have to go into closed session from negotiation before we can come back out and act on this. Anyone care to speak for this resolution? It involves Carolina Treetops. What we will do, come back at the end of the meeting and talk more in depth about it at that point. Anyone have anything to speak at this time? I'm doing this in the interest of your time. I don't want to keep you here all night if you want to speak at this point. Hearing none, council, we're going to continue this to the end of the meeting then. We'll move into public hearing number six to consider an incentive proposal for Project Steel. Mark, I guess you need to come back up and introduce that one.
Well, the economy is doing well, and so we're starting to see some of our businesses expand, and this is one of the ones that is in the process of expanding and is requested to receive incentives from the city to this. Right now, we're not releasing the name of the company publicly. We're still using the project name Steel because it's not, the whole process hasn't continued, hasn't been finished yet. But they're planning on creating 44 new jobs and investing $3.8 million in equipment. The average wage will be about $32,800, which is above the county's average, which then qualifies them also for this, and also some state grants as well. The incentive that we're proposing, which would be spread out over an eight-year period, is $71,433 for the city of Albemarle. The county would be putting in, well, let's see, the total taxes collected from this would be about $97,800, $97,800, $800,000. And so the net over that period would collect about $26,000 in taxes over that net over that period.
Council, the way this works, this is as we've done in the past, they would pay the taxes on any increased value that they do in this new expansion, and we would in turn give them back an incentive over the eight-year period, so much year. They pay it upfront, then we give it back to them if they meet all the requirements of this incentive. Now, I do want you to know this is a competitive process because we are competing against other states and other communities trying to not only retain the business that we have, but also have the expansion. So even though we can't release the name, we are working to retain what we have and expand if they choose to bring the other jobs from other locations in other states to our cities, what we're trying to do.
And also, the county is also considering this tonight as well, and we're working closely with the state with their programs to be involved with this. Just a couple of other facts. Went ahead and did a look at the impact in addition to what they're doing. With the 44 jobs they're creating, there's estimated that another 26 would be created as a result of that.
Mark, put your.
Oh, as a result of that. Okay.
That's true.
The income from labor is going to be about, who work there directly, is going to be about $1.8 million, and so that'll have an indirect and an induced effect of an additional $915,000, this is per year, and so that is a total of about $2.7 million. The GDP, which is the gross product for our region, the direct effect is about $3.7 million, there's been indirect of about $1 million, and an induced effect of about $583,000 for a total of $5.3, $5.4 million of added value. And then the output of the products would be a total of, including all the effects, would be about $16.7 million. So it would have a good impact on our community and also as not only being in competition, this company is looking at reorganizing itself nationally, and so they're looking at consolidations too. So this is really important for this company, to incentivize this company to come here because we need these jobs and it's a company that's been around for a while.
Council, on your agenda, you have a breakdown of how that $71,000 would be occurring over the next eight years. Does anyone have any questions of Mark for that?
It's the same thing, basically, this is the same kind of incentive that the county is looking at tonight.
Exactly.
Is that correct?
Right.
And basically, bottom line, it's not money that we're giving anyone.
Right.
It's just that return on their taxes paid.
Right.
On their net.
Correct.
What their net bring in.
Right.
If they don't do the investment, they don't get anything.
Right.
Council, have any further questions of Mark? Hearing none, it'd be appropriate to entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Hall.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Townsend. Further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Council, in your agenda, you have a resolution to approve, if anyone cares to make that motion.
Resolution 1813.
Motion by Councilmember Hall to approve Resolution 1813. Second by Councilmember Bramlett. Further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Under announced allegations, number seven, Mr. Wesley Vaughn, Retail Strategies, to provide a city council an update on their service and activities.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Good evening. We're, as the mayor just said, this is, I'm Wesley Vaughn and that is Jordan Williams with Retail Strategies. We're out of Birmingham, Alabama. We're here tonight, we're at the end of our four-year partnership right now with Albemarle, and we're looking to extend that partnership. Jordan's handing out the presentation that I'll kind of be moving through. If I go too quickly, please just ask me questions, but just conscious of y'all's time tonight. On the second slide, just kind of goes over, you know, when we started with you all, it was March 2014, and our contract just expired July 1st, 2018. Total city investment so far has been $63,000, mostly due to a large discount and matching grant from Electric Cities. And then what we're asking for is $25,000 a year, and that's just an identical renewal from what it was this previous year. So slide three basically just kind of just says, when we first started, we really got dug deep into the data for Albemarle, so we knew the market really well for retail recruitment. And when I say data, I kind of mainly mean population, median income, traffic counts, but sometimes consumer spending, basically anything and everything, and we're always sharing that with the city and Develius, ma'am.
Wesley, you're talking about slides, and we have them.
Yes.
Do you have them that we can use?
No, I did not, I'm sorry, no, I did not bring them on.
A lot of times, folks out here, or folks that watch it later, would like to see it.
Right, yes.
Okay, just checking.
I'd be able to share that with the city afterwards, though.
Okay, thank you very much.
I'm sorry about that. And then with that, we get that data and we create a marketing flyer to the big 11-by-17 brochure, and we are directly sharing that with national retailers and developers to get them interested in Albemarle. So instead of just having a magazine ad that you're hoping someone looks at, we're literally handing this to our contacts in the real estate business. And we update that a lot of times twice a year and most of the time once a year, just to have the new latest census data every single year once that comes out. And those data services we have for thousands of dollars a year, it's not just the typical census data. Slide five just kind of shows all the different resources we use. We have our own GIS system. And slide six, mobile tracking, that's a new data resource that we have to basically show that Albemarle is not just the city boundaries. People are coming from outside the city to shop here. It's a much stronger market. Yeah, so the trade area is not just, you know, municipal boundaries. So what that image is showing is basically, we can track people from where they come from through shopping, Albemarle's Walmart, for instance. We try to use like the biggest retailer, but we can use any retailer in the market. But actually, as you can see, the light blue is lower concentrations of where people are coming from to shop, but it still shows some massive trade area. And that's one of our tools that we do share with those national retailers to say, you know, hey, Albemarle's a bigger market than you give it credit for. Another thing we do is we catalog basically every potential retail site in the market. Who owns it? How much are they looking to sell it for or lease it for? How much square footage do they have available, et cetera? And we are directly sharing those opportunities with our contacts.
Property as well.
Right, we're just kind of a matchmaker in that sense between those local property owners and brokers and those national retailers or operators and developers as well. And then just slide nine just kind of gives you kind of the numbers of how much we've done so far for the city, and we'll get to exact return on investment later, but 10-plus local property owners we've talked to, assisted, either shared data with or shared specific retailers that, prospects that they should go after, 10-plus developers we've actually brought to the city as to tour the market or actually do a development in the market. Every year, Jordan and I and our team attend four regional and national conferences to, basically on y'all's behalf, we go to represent you all at them, and that, those conferences will have 30,000 to 5,000 people at them, all in the real estate business. We've reached out to 100 retailers directly through email, phone call, in-person meetings about Albemarle, and that number just keeps on growing as partnership continues. And then right now, there's about six or so retailers actively looking at sites in the market that we have shared with them, or we've engaged them about Albemarle in general, and they have found a site that they really like. And then so far, there are five retailers that we've helped recruit. Slide 10, 11 just have a list of property owners, local brokers and developers that we've kind of worked with, and that's another list that just keeps on growing. That's just a small sample. Slide 12 just kind of says, other stuff we keep doing for the city is just sharing a lot of data, just providing our site analysis and intuition, and then helping backfill empty spaces in the market, like the former JCPenney, God's Country, Burke's Outlet, the Ryan's Denny's and so on. Some of those have been successfully backfilled, and some of those are still in progress right now. Slide 13 just kind of shows the, those four major conferences that we go to. Our team goes to about like 20 or so a year, but Jordan and I, those are the four main ones that Jordan and I go to. And then there's annual partnership value. You guys almost have a half a million dollars of value that you are getting for $25,000 a year. Once you add up how much we spend on traveling to those conferences, our data and different software that we're always sharing, and then just our contacts that we're always emailing to local property owners, brokers, even the city to help them meet with those individuals, and then just the staff members. Instead of just hiring one staff member to go after retail, you get basically 34, 35 employees to do that for the cost of $25,000. And then what's been our return on investment so far over the past four years? The five retailers that are either at lease in the market or already open in the market, East Coast Wings, Farmers Furniture, Highway 55 Burgers, Ali's Bargain Outlet and Rosa Express, those are all retailers that early on in our partnership and even midway through our partnership, we were able to meet with them at conferences or email them, get them on the phone, talk to them about Albemarle. Some of them were already interested, some of them, you know, we had to send them the right data, the right sites, and then they became interested, and once we connected them with local brokers, local property owners, they ended up getting a deal done to enter the market. And that slide also just includes, you know, the county sales tax revenue, that's just projected and then estimated jobs as well. So that's almost, you know, 100-plus jobs, almost $200,000 of yearly county sales tax And then I just kind of like summarize our connections with those retailers, but then future return on investment, those six retailers that are kind of interested, I mean, that's just like those six retailers that are actively looking. There are also some that, I told us they're interested, but you know, it's further down the pipeline for Albemarle, which is great for us because we know there's more work to be done. I can't list them because we don't want to lose any of our contacts, but I've just kind of given them very vague names and you can make educated guesses based on their estimated annual sales and average jobs that they hire. But that's what we hope to continue working on, you know, those six, but also retail trends just change month to month. So it could be 12 next month if it goes well, and we feel pretty, very confident that a few of those will be on our next recap presentation to you all, whenever that may be. But we'd love to answer any questions that you may have.
Council, if you don't know, Retail Strategies partners with Electric Cities.
Right.
Charity's sitting back here in the corner being quiet, but she works with them also.
Yes, she's our third team member.
They've kind of been a great cooperation for recruiting for us, and even though they don't take credit for some of these, they've been involved in some of these other stores that have come here. They may not have made the initial contact, but they've helped the process move forward.
Right.
Yes, Ms. Hall?
Just, when was the last time we got a gap analysis?
We try to provide that every year, just like an Excel sheet, but that's something we can easily provide. I think the new numbers just came out this summer, actually.
Just came out.
Right, the 2018 numbers we could be able to provide for you.
I would love to have one because personally, one of the things I think that folks in this community in Albemarle and then with the surrounding, in the county and the surrounding counties, is those things and those items, folks, we have a lot of them that provide them, and then those items that don't get taken care of, people go out of town for. I think the news and press is here, our local newspaper and our radio is here, and if they realize, you know, that one of the things that you all have done is to show, for instance, we have a lot of this type of retail and this type of retail we don't, people leave for it.
Definitely.
And I've looked you both guys in the eyes, and I don't have to tell you, I don't have to tell you the story.
Yes.
But I still have you challenged.
It's on our list of ones that we're always contacting every few months. We reach out to them.
With the state of Oho, that's right.
Yes.
Thanks, Mayor.
Anyone else have any questions? Any other comments, Wesley?
That's it for now. Now we're just looking forward to continue working with you all.
Thank you very much, and I'm sure we'll be in contact continuously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Number eight, and if I get this name wrong, please correct me. Sandra Breezy, I'm assuming, 602 Prospect Church Road, requesting a limit on cats per household per city ordinance. Would you come forward?
I don't think so.
I do not see you here, so we'll move on. Mr. James Harris, Center City Mill, 233 Montgomery Avenue, requests enlargement of a drain pipe.
Mayor, council? We have an issue between my property on Third Street and in between Harson Funeral Home. The pipe that collects all the water from that six acres of asphalt and roof goes to one pipe, and we're having flooding issues. It's been going on for like 15 years, and we've put in new drains and everything we can do to stop it. We've slowed it down. We used to get three foot of water in the basement. 15 years ago now, we get a foot, but we still get it, and it's ruining stuff, you know. We clean it up, it happens three times a year. But the way it is, the water comes from my parking lot to a pipe that goes across the road. But instead of going straight across the road, the water has to kick back, so it just dams up before it can even go, and it backs all the way up to the basement. Ross Holshausen has seen what I'm talking about. He knows we have a problem. The pipe at Harson is, what would you say, 2000? Ross Holshausen has seen what I'm talking about. He knows we have a problem. The pipe at Hartzell is, what would you say, 24-inch?
Eighteen.
I think the pipe across the road is what, 15?
Fifteen to 20 inches.
And it's probably.
If it's hard to access.
Yeah, but.
Do you know that the pipe is 24 all the way up to the Hartzell's property? I know you said it wasn't Second Street. Do we know what it is under the Hartzell property?
We can't visually see from where the pipe turns on the Hartzell property that goes down the old railroad spur that comes up. Where we have seen visually seen the pipe is down on Second Street at the intersection of Salisbury and Second there at the, I guess it's a car lot insurance place now. We do have some culverts there where we can visualize, and it's about a 24-inch pipe there, so I assume that it's 24-inch just about all the way up. We haven't been able to visually see that.
How do we check it on their side of the road? What are we going to have to do to check it on their side of the road?
On the Hartzell Funeral Home side, what we have discovered is an old brick vault that's going to be very hard to access, especially with the equipment we have. We don't have anything to be able to put a man down in that in that area just because it's a confined space. The old steps that were built into that brick vault have been rusted away, and you're probably 10 to 12-foot deep in that area. And we just don't have the staffing or the equipment capable of being able to put a man down there safely to visualize. Now, we could probably get the assistance of the Water and Sewer Department to help maybe try to put a camera in there, but again, it's 10 to 12-foot deep. We tried the camera on the other side, and even accessing the pipes going under Third Street, it's hard to get to. I put a small map in the attachments. It's just a drawing on the conglomeration of boxes that are tied into all that.
Well, what we need to do on the Hartzell side, if it is a larger pipe, if it is a larger pipe, then maybe doing something on their Third Street is the right thing to do. But if it's the same size pipe and it runs all the way down that spur and only gets bigger toward the end, that's on private property. So, we're going to need to know what we're looking at to begin with before you can even make a recommendation to it. I went over and you wouldn't wonder who this stranger is who's been walking your property.
Don't shoot him, don't shoot him.
On the Montgomery side.
Right.
Where the loading ramp is, can we raise that? It comes in like this, and it's very low, and I've been over there when it was raining, and I know see the water running down. If we raise that, what's that going to do if we raise the sidewalk to you being able to use it?
It would cap because that water does come under that, and it's made to come under that breezeway there.
I saw that.
And go out the back, and that's where it hits the vein, all the drains, you know.
So, if we raise that up, it looked to me like it needed to come up several inches. If we came in and raised the sidewalk and the curb up, what do you have going in there that we're going to have a dragging problem getting in? Or you may have to replace some cement on your sides, is what I'm asking.
I have a company that uses vans, as long as you can get a vehicle in there, that's fine, just a regular van.
So, a high van?
That road's been paved so many times out there in Montgomery, you know, and it's just getting up to where there's no.
But even if we raise that, I think if we don't bring the sidewalk up too, it's not going to help you a whole lot. I think all of it needs to come up some.
But still, the water that comes there will just travel around to Third Street and run down Third Street and hit that low spot.
Ross, where's that drain go to that's just east of that?
East of the driveway entrance on Montgomery. That box ties into the Fourth Street.
So, if we get everything to that drain, it would go away from his property.
That little bit.
Correct, but you're not going to be able to change the elevation grade of the road, though, to push water that way. That would be the only issue.
Well, basically, all I'm talking about is raising the back curb of this. You replace the curbing guttering and raising the back curb up some. Is that going, is?
We would have to shoot elevations. I mean, I couldn't guarantee the water going that way because it could possibly easily fall back towards Third Street.
But we don't want that to happen. We want it to go in that drain and go to Fourth Street.
That would be, we would have to just shoot grade. We wouldn't be able to control that because even no matter how high you raise the curbing, the water's going to flow with the elevation of the street. You know, you could raise the curb any height you wanted to, but the water's still going to go with the elevation of the street.
Right. So, we need to go, look at that, and we need to camera under Third Street before we can give him any kind of answer, correct?
Knowing what the size of the pipe is under Third Street and knowing what the size of the pipe is going down behind the Hartzell Funeral Home is going to be key.
Yeah.
There's no use in trying to upsize the pipe under Third if it's the same size pipe feeding going down, going down the vein there.
Can we coordinate that and do that so we can get back with you?
We can try to. I would think that utilities might be able to get a camera that deep down in that manhole. We'll just, I'll coordinate that with Brian.
What we've seen by just flat, you know, the pipe on the other side of Hartzell, plenty of big channels of water.
So, it's much bigger, you think?
Oh, yeah.
It's a large vault underneath the manhole. The way they were constructed years ago, and you're probably talking infrastructure that the Mill put in.
Right.
100 years ago, it's, it may be 18 inches in diameter at the top, but once it goes down four or five feet, then it opens up into a large vault.
But we need to know what that pipe coming out is.
That's right.
Okay.
But it is causing a lot of damage. I mean, it's over the years, over the years, we've done everything on our side.
Counsel, have any questions, or we will investigate this and then see what we can do. Okay? Any other comments? Okay, thank you.
Very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to administrative, I have unannounced allegations. We have several. First one is Dave Andrews, 1231 Columbus Street.
Actually, I'll take off my hat here for a second. It was an item on the agenda regarding the parking on, it was Salisbury and Sherwood, and it's extremely dangerous. My wife and I have to exit that intersection all the time. It comes up on a steep hill, and there's cars usually right on either side of that. You have to pull all the way out into this traffic, see what's coming down this traffic. If a car's coming, you've got to stop right in the middle of the lane right there, and we do this all the time because you've got to get to pass these cars that are parked right on either side of that road right there. I just wanted to bring it to your attention since I saw it on the agenda. It's, you know, it's pretty dangerous. I didn't know if there's parking enforcement, a certain amount of distance from the intersection, you have to be back, or that the city can enforce per se, or if there's any other kind of parking along there, I'm not sure, but it's just very difficult to see when you pull out of that particular road.
Okay. We'll be talking about that just a little bit later.
Thanks.
Thank you. Kathy Costello, 302 South Third Street, dumpster sitting on the street for more than a year.
Thank you for letting me address the council. My name is Kathy Costello. I live at 302 South Third Street in Alamo. In 2016, a dumpster was placed on the street in front of 306 South Third Street. At first, work was being done inside of the house at 306, but nothing has been done in over six months. This is not a pleasant sight. When you come to the stop sign at Third and Hearn, it is hard to see around the dumpster for oncoming cars. Wildlife is making nests in the dumpster. I would like to be taken under consideration to establish an ordinance on how long a dumpster can sit obstructing the street. Thank you for your time.
So, you say there's no more construction going on in all of that house?
Right.
Okay. I took the manager down there today, and we looked at it, so he will be contacting them to get it moved. And counsel, if you, as far as what you want to do for the future, just let us know.
What kind of guidelines? Do we have any guidelines?
Well, we don't have a guideline. We normally allow this, but we don't allow it that kind of time period. We usually allow it while they're working on the house, but if she's not been working on it for six months, it should have been moved by now.
Who owns it, Mayor?
Who owns it?
William Wade owns it, and he lives in Concord, and he usually rents the house out, but it hasn't been rented out in, it's been two years.
So, I assume it's not an active building permit, then, correct?
I don't know. Once you start one, and I can tell where the windows have been replaced and some other things there, I don't know what other.
I called him yesterday, and he promised me he would call today to try to have it moved.
Okay.
But that's an issue that other communities might be confronted with also, and he may not get this one moved just because I called, so I think anything we can do would be helpful there.
We'll have staff follow up with that and get it moved, and Michael, you can also research from other cities if there anybody has an ordinance.
I mean, if a car were sitting there without wheels, we would be right on it, and I don't see any difference in that and what we've got out there.
Well, it's all trying to be user-friendly while we're letting them remodel houses, but I think they've taken advantage of our.
Been there almost two years.
Not against the curb, it's out.
It's out the road.
Way in the road, which makes visibility a real issue. You're cutting out furniture.
Just a follow-up question. Can you tell who owns that particular, that?
No, it doesn't have a name on it.
No.
I would say he owns it himself. It's his, and he's using our street for storage.
Because those things are expensive when you have them for any length of time.
Yeah, that's why I say he owns that dumpster.
Because it looks like one of those, you could read it, I think, early on, because
I went over there and looked at one time when he first put it out, and there were, at that point, there were people there working, so it didn't make a big issue. But you can't really read it, writing on it so much or whatever. It almost looks like it says Rowan, but I'm not sure that's what the words are.
We will follow up on it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mark McIntyre, 109 North Fifth Street.
My name is Mark McIntyre. I was a police officer for the city of Alamo from 2012 to 2016. On tonight's agenda, I saw that there will be a vote on ordinance 1827 to appropriate unspent funds for housing demolition. Urges you all to please vote yes on this topic. During my time as an officer, I was assigned mainly to the west side of town. One tactic used by local BND perpetrators was to break into a residence, steal multiple electronics like TVs, computers and gaming consoles, and then stash them in abandoned houses. For these criminals, it was considered a low-risk move. It was a low-risk move because it let them store the stolen property in a location and severed any connection they may have had to the items. Abandoned houses that are not deemed livable for human condition, not up to code, and or the owner has no intention of bringing the structures up to code in spite of multiple warnings or an eyesore on the community, and more importantly, these houses can act as a catalyst to property crimes, environment crimes within the city. I understand it's a slow process because the city must consider factors like budget and manpower. However, it is my belief by passing ordinance 1827, the city is taking a step in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mark.
Kathy, it looks like it.
It is not.
No, it's not.
I have one more unannounced for that. He had to go to another meeting, and he'll be back. We'll recognize him when he gets back. Moving on to administrative reports, your monthly departmental reports are in your agenda. Does anyone have any questions?
The only thing, I just see that we're up, are we up 25% on fire calls this month along?
Thirty-one.
Thirty-one percent, oh, that minute. And I read it in something either the fire or the police about how many overdose calls we have had.
It was in the fire.
The Narcan.
And Narcan, that's right, administered, and I think I saw that we had an enormous amount just last week within our county.
Twenty-two.
Well, I know, I mean, for the public to understand, we had one in June of 2017, and this past month, we had 21.
Right.
So, you know, I mean, that's a huge increase.
Mr. Mayor, I understand we've broken out shoplifting from larceny. Exactly what is larceny?
What do you mean, we've broken out shoplifting?
In the report, police department.
Oh, okay.
What is larceny?
Well, larceny may not, may be from a house. Shoplifting is typically from a store.
Larceny is stealing.
Well, they're both stealing. They're basically the way that the state categorizes. That's their category, so we're using, use what the state does.
It's one of those criminal justice determinations.
Municipal calendar is in your agenda. Does anyone have any questions on that?
The only change I have, there's not an RPO meeting this month. We had one last month, and the next one is September 20th, I believe.
Okay, good. Moving on to unfinished business. Consider proposed timeline for repairs to 608 Summit Avenue. Is anyone here for Bobby Rory? Staff had told them to be here tonight, so we will continue that to the next meeting. Number 13, upcoming 2018 board appointments. I'm going to go through those, a couple that we can, and then ask you to do some action on some others and give the staff some time. First, Michael left you a paper at your desk tonight. ABC had been overlooked by our local store, and we need to do an appointment on that. It should have been done a couple of months ago. Terry Morgan is, term has expired. He is interested in continuing to serve, and the manager at the store has asked that we allow him to continue to serve.
That's the only one that's up this year, isn't it?
On the ABC board, correct.
Move approval.
Motion by Councilmember Hall, second by Councilmember, who said that?
Right in, Your Honor.
Dry, further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Next, we have the planning board and board of adjustment, which staff has recommended we consider putting those boards together since they do not meet regularly, and hopefully they can act more efficiently. If council is agreeable to that, we need to authorize staff to bring us back ordinances at the next meeting to make those change, and also follow up with some of the members that our terms are expiring and see if they want to be reappointed because we have not done that either. Proposal was to go down to 12 members, nine active and three alternates. It's what council or what staff is recommending. Council have any concerns with that?
Nope.
If not, I would entertain a motion then that we allow staff to bring us back some ordinances at our next meeting.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Dry.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Townsend, further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Moving to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, you have two reappointments, but if you're looking at the attendance, you may not want to reappoint some of these.
May I make a comment while looking at that? I want to thank the folks that were instrumental in doing this attendance and slash workshops and/or events. I appreciate, and I can't see Kevin, I know he's over there somewhere, but I see Lisa. Thank you because I, you know, I'm of the opinion if somebody wants to be there, they need to be there, and they need to be there not just when they have to, but other events as well. So, thank you for doing that, and I agree with the mayor. Guys, we can't continue to put people on things if they're not going to show up or if they're not going to be active in outside other than meetings.
I would like the record to show that Michelle Osborne has moved to Greensboro.
Right.
And that's, she's been gone a while, so.
Of that, Lisa, Ron Lothlin has been attending, and if council wished to reappoint him.
Who?
Ron Lothlin.
And he represents, I don't have that up in front of me. Hold on.
It's like a blue one.
Yeah, I know where he is on there, but what?
He's at large.
See, okay.
I move approve.
Motion by Councilmember Dry to reappoint Ron Lothlin, second by Councilmember Hall, further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. So, counsel, that leaves you with two appointments we need, and we need one for a new appointment for an unexpired term of Ben Davis, who is no longer on the board, and to replace Michelle who is no longer on the board, and to replace Michelle Osborne. So, we're going to need two to replace those. Unless council has somebody in mind tonight.
And Michelle Osborne is?
Is that a district or what?
Yeah.
The vacant one.
Michelle says.
She was representing Central Elementary School, so we would.
And the vacant one is District Four.
District Four.
So, I think that's what we've got to look at.
So, we need to ask Central Elementary to make us a recommendation first.
Right.
Right.
So, we need to reach out to the principal at Central Elementary and have, see if they have someone they'd like to recommend to represent them.
And a reminder where District Four is for the public out here.
Looking precinct seven, I believe.
Then, we've never reappointed one from your district, have we?
Yeah, we have Julie Curtis.
Okay, Julie Curtis.
Yes.
Should I look for one in District Four?
And I would think if you know of anyone in your, that is your district.
One came to mind, but I haven't spoken with the person yet.
Let's continue that the next month. Go ahead and reach out to them and see if that's something you want to bring to council at the next meeting. We also have two more. I did not read, come down a little bit further. Sean Baldwin and Jerry Barrier are both up for reappointment, three-year terms.
Motion to reappoint Sean Baldwin.
Second.
Motion to reappoint Sean Baldwin by Councilmember Townsend. Second by Councilmember Hall, further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
What's Jerry Barrier's attendance?
Hold on a minute.
Eighty percent.
I thought he was pretty active. Motion by Councilmember Bramlett, and second by Councilmember Dry to reappoint Jerry Barrier. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Next is the Planning Board we're going to put off for the next time. You have two reappointments to the Tree Commission that are eligible. Daphne Hare and Elaine Nelson, both of them expire this month. Elaine is the chairman. How many has Daphne?
I don't have it on this one. Hold on. Hang tight, I don't have it on this one. You know what?
I don't believe we have it there.
Oh, the Tree Commission attendance, that, yeah, that.
No, it's not on here.
I can tell you that we meet twice a year, and they're attending.
Okay.
Everybody on the Tree Commission will always have a.
And Daphne, you know, Nafny has married and moved to New London, but that doesn't keep her off of here, because Elaine lives in Norwood as well. I'd move that we approve both of those.
I agree, second.
Motion by Councilmember Hall, second by Councilmember Dry, further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Now, we need one to replace Dr. Lyles, who has moved away. So, we're going to need another one for that. Board of Council will be thinking about that. If you don't have anybody tonight, be thinking about that, please.
And I guess, just a reminder to folks that are here and folks that are watching this, we make appointments to these different boards and commissions based on folks doing the appropriate application process. We're just not out there cherry picking things. We're picking it, people who have made, made known that they want to serve, so.
All right, moving to HRC, we have one vacancy, and we have, let me go back to that, make sure.
And Roger doesn't.
Roger does not want to be reappointed.
And Lynn Plummer, too. Lynn and Rob McIntyre.
Lynn and Rob, we need to reappoint if council so desires.
So moved.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Dry, second by Councilmember Hughes to reappoint Rob McIntyre and Lynn Plummer. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. You also have another vacant position, and at this point, you have two people that have submitted interest in being on that board. That was Lynn White and Vicki Hodgins.
We're still on the HRC, right?
HRC.
Did we approve Lynn White?
Motion by Councilmember Hall to approve Lynn White for the HRC. Second by Councilmember Aldridge, further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Mr. Ferris, have we covered everything tonight on the boards?
I think so, we've got.
I think so, until we come back to the planning.
Names to come back with, and waiting to come back with the ordinance to combine the Planning Board and zoning board of adjustment.
And staff, you will make a couple contacts and make sure that they want to be reappointed to the Planning Board and the Board of Adjustment. If we go with 12, I think most of the reappointments will put us at about that number, because I think you said there was one or two that you didn't think wanted to be reappointed, so that would about make us right on that number. Okay. All right, thank you. Moving to number 14, consider submission of the advocacy goals to the league municipalities. The number one that I know of is what we've talked about, and we've already adopted a resolution and given it to our senator, is the quarter cent sales tax for infrastructure or roads. That's the one I think we need to submit. And I think if they limit it, not make it too broad, it would have a better chance of passing, so I'd hope they would say roads or infrastructure at the most, or not make it real broad. If you make it real broad, it's going to be harder to pass.
For the entire state.
Yes.
And I think that's where we've got to make us clear. We would, you know, that's right, it's for the entire state.
And we're going to ask for it for the entire state, but we might also ask for it for local bill if it doesn't go to state.
Right.
Anything else council has? That's the only one I know of right offhand.
I have an issue that I don't know how to go about making it into a goal, but the issue is, is the, I don't want, first, let me see, I don't want whatever happened for the General Assembly to determine what I'm about to say. Okay? So, it's not something that the general, that we want the General Assembly to take care of, but it's something that our membership needs to look at. And that is our, the elected folks across the state taking care of our retirees. Our retirees and the retiree system for local government employees. It's a pot of money that goes to the state treasurer, which is a different pot of money than the state employees and teachers get. It is basically, the rate is a little bit higher for local government than it is for the state. The rate of, the calculator rate's about 300ths different more for the local than it is the state. But locals are not, our local retirees are not getting cost of living raises. They're not getting cost of living. And we've got some local government employees here in Albemarle who, yes, they're getting, they're getting a retirement check because they've worked here for 30 years, but their retirement check, if they've been retired 15 or so years, is not growing at all. So, it is an issue that we just need, and I can't tell you to fix it all for the problem.
Legislature.
But we don't want the General Assembly to dictate it, because then that gets to be one of those things where the General Assembly is working outside of their own lane of traffic, if you will. So, just know that it's going to be that when we go to the Goals Conference, whenever that is, in November, or when you go to the conference in August, September, that is going to be an issue that's probably going to be talked about among our membership, is how do we take care of our retirees? Okay?
Because I think that needs to be a group discussion.
It does.
Because it is going to have some controversy.
It is going to, but it's not something that we need the General Assembly to determine. And, you know, state treasurer is, he knows that the retirees association is going out and seeking the assistance from local government, cities, and counties. Just FYI, it's out there, and it's going to be an issue that you're going to hear more about. And you probably have gotten a letter about it individually from the North County Retired Government Association of Employees Association. You may have gotten a letter about what we're trying to do to take care of our local government retirees. So, just FYI.
Anything else council would like to consider as a goal to ask? And we're not, the time period's not over yet. We still got a little bit of time. If you think of something, we can still act on it. I see Ty Vane come in. I will move back to unannounced delegations and ask him to come forward. Go ahead and introduce yourself and.
Good evening, Mayor Michael. My name is Ty Vane. I'm here, first of all, thank you for having me. I'm here tonight to announce my candidacy for District Court Judge in the newly created Judicial and Prosecutorial District that was the result of mergers in Stanley and Montgomery County. I want to tell you a little bit about myself tonight. I am a lifelong resident of Montgomery County. Attended elementary school, middle school, and graduated from West Montgomery High School in 1998. I received my Bachelor of Arts in English from the George Washington University in 2001. Attended North Carolina Central University School of Law, where I obtained my Juris Doctor degree in 2005. Shortly after being admitted to the bar, I went into private practice in Spark River, South Carolina. There, I represented clients in both state and federal court. I argued cases on appeal before the Full Industrial Commission. In 2008, after meeting my wife and getting married, we decided we wanted to start a family. We couldn't think of a better place but to come back home. My parents own a chicken farm in Troy. When we came back, due to their age and their health, we bought them out. My wife and I still own and operate this farm, in addition to my duties as an Assistant District Attorney. I'm currently the Chief Assistant District Attorney here in Stanley County. I serve as liaison for law enforcement. I also manage four other assistants in our office. The reason why I want to become a District Court Judge, because I believe in this community. We've got good people here, good, honest, hard-working people. And this is my way of giving back. You know, my wife and I, we, you know, we came back here to raise a family. Our kids are in school here. They attend school here, we worship here, we live here, we're part of the community. And there's no better way to serve this community than to be a District Court Judge. I've been a career prosecutor all my life, and this is kind of the pinnacle of where I want to be. When the merger was talked about as being proposed, one of the concerns that we kept on hearing from the folks over in Montgomery County was their accessibility to a District Court Judge. Law enforcement officers, attorneys, they always complained that they couldn't find a judge after 5:00. And one of the things that I pride myself on when I came to the District Attorney's Office was being available to our law enforcement officers, to being, you know, being able to give them the support they need after 5:00. I've actually had a detective call me at 3:00 in the morning, and when I picked up, he said, wow, you really do pick up the phone. And so, I've been called on Christmas Day, I've been called on Christmas Eve, and just recently this year, I was called the day after my wife gave birth to our son. You know, that's one of the things that I want to bring to the judge's office, to be accessible to the community, to be accessible to law enforcement, and to be accessible to our attorneys, because, you know, in certain cases, time is of the essence. So, I come here tonight to ask for your support, and more importantly, to ask for your vote come this November. Thank you, Mayor Michael.
Thank you very much. We wish you the best, but I will hate to see you leave, because you're an excellent prosecutor. Thank you.
Thanks, Ty.
Moving back to number 15, ordinance 1827 to appropriate unspent funds for housing demolitions.
Move to approve, Your Honor.
Motion by Councilmember Dry.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Aldridge, further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. And I will tell you that staff is moving as rapidly as possible on some of these. The bids for abatement come in much higher than we had hoped, but we are moving forward with a large number of houses. And council, you remember how many we approved this year, and we're moving forward with that. In fact, they're looking to add more houses to that list. So, we know there's a lot more out there. We just have to take them as our budget will allow us to get them down.
A comment, Your Honor, on that is that I think this group here has taken a more proactive approach to this problem in our community. It's an easy one to overlook, but it's a sad point to overlook it. And I congratulate Planning on their going after it as they have, and you certainly have our support.
And I'll also remind council that in this new budget, we have, are entering into an agreement with COG to supply somebody one day a week that will help us hopefully move those forward even quicker and help us with other nuisance issues. So, we're meeting within the next week or two with James, so he can tell us exactly what he will do, and we can get that agreement in writing. And I was just informed, I did not know, that our COG.
Executive Director.
Executive Director has resigned, and they will be looking for a new one. He has taken a job as a city manager, so they'll be looking for a new executive director over the next few months.
You know where he's gone? Back to Statesville, yeah. And that's the county from which we came.
Okay. Number 16, declaring timber at Roosevelt Ingram City Park surplus so we can accept bids and move forward with getting that down. Council, I'm asking you to declare it surplus, but I'm also asking you to allow us to do the informal bids and for staff to approve those bids, so we can move quickly with getting that down, hopefully before the guard gets here to start doing their work.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Hall, second by Councilmember Bramlett, further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Is the guard still looking at August?
If we can get online with what we need to get done, that's the last we heard from them, trying to get here in August. We have received back, if council members, we had to do a environmental erosion plan. We have got that back, so we know exactly what we're going to be doing there and how the retention is going to be. We just need to move forward with that as quickly as possible. Number 17, the appointment of a tax collector. As you know, Lindsay has moved on to other employment, and we need to appoint a tax collector, because we are required to have one by law. And that is an appointment position of this council.
Move that we appoint Richard, and Richard, I never can pronounce the name correctly.
Lanzelotti.
Lanzelotti.
Council, have any questions of Richard or what his duties will be? He or Michael will be glad to answer them.
He did tell me he's been in training for five years.
Motion by Councilmember Hall.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Aldridge, further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
So, you'll do the oath later on?
I will actually do it in the office, yeah. Number 18, proclamation for July is National Park and Recreation Month. Council have any questions on that?
Well, we got the Department of Rec staff here.
Yes, we all have them all come up here.
Ms. Hall, why don't you bring it up and read it for us?
Sit here and listen to us all night.
Yeah. Bring it up and read it, babe.
Here we go. Whereas parks and recreation programs are an integral part of communities throughout this country, including Albemarle, North Carolina, and whereas our parks and recreation are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of all citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of a community and region, and whereas parks and recreation programs build healthy, active communities that aid in the prevention of chronic disease, provide therapeutic recreation services for those who are mentally or physically disabled, and also improve the mental and emotional health of all citizens. And whereas parks and recreation programs increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of business, and crime reduction. And whereas parks and recreation areas are fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community. And whereas parks and natural recreation areas improve water quality, protect groundwater, prevent flooding, improve the quality of the air we breathe, provide vegetative buffers to development, and produce habitat for wildlife. And whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. And whereas the United States House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month, and whereas Albemarle, North Carolina recognizes the benefits derived from parks and recreation resources. Now, therefore, it being resolved by Albemarle City Council that July is recognized as Park and Recreation Month in Albemarle, North Carolina, proclaim this the ninth day of July 2018, City of Albemarle, by the mayor and members of council.
I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Hughes, second by Councilmember Whitley, further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Yeah, we need to bring them up here and get a picture.
We need a picture.
Yes, they do.
Bring all of your staff up.
Have all got their shirts on.
Yeah.
I wore my shirt from last year just this weekend. It was white.
I like these light blue ones. I like the style. I like the.
Turn around, so Sean can get your picture.
Sean is the Robert Whitley today.
Let's see, that's deep blue, right? Somebody move to the left side of Lisa.
They don't love, let's even it up.
Tighten up.
Staff, thank you very much for all you do.
Appreciate it.
Number 19, consider approval of a special event permit for the Stanley County March for Women. This is next January, but I thank them very much for getting it to us in plenty of time. Now, that's nothing more. Nothing more aggravating to get it to last minute and try to arrange security.
Move to approve.
With your motion, I'm asking you to approve that the police department close roads as they deem fit. They'll probably do it like a block at a time rather than close the entire.
Move to approve and have the police department close roads as necessary.
Motion by Councilmember Dry. Second by Councilmember Townsend. Further discussion?
Just a quick question. The date of it is not the date of the MLK wall.
It is not. We moved to January the 12th, the Saturday before.
Okay, gotcha.
Is there a fee attached to this, or do we need to waive any fees? I didn't notice anything was checked.
They're not actually blocking off roads.
Yeah, we're not blocking it. I think we're okay.
Just want to be sure for you. Don't want you to have to pay anything.
All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Number 20 is information. It's a response from NC DOT about two areas. One was First Street Speed Limit Response, and the other was what Mr. Andrews brought up earlier, Salisbury Avenue at Sherwood. As you see in the response letter, both of them, they denied saying that the traffic studies did not warrant either one of those requests. They did make some suggestions on First Street that we could do some crosswalk work if we wanted to, but it would be at our expense. Well, I don't see the crosswalk being needed because we already have a push-button stoplight there. So at this point, there is nothing else we can move forward because all of those streets are DOT streets, and they're not willing to do it.
So there's no way they would allow us to put a sign up that says you can't park from this point forward?
DOT would have to approve it. They say it's not warranted.
The Sherwood issue.
The Sherwood issue is what he's talking about. But is the parking a problem to the corner? Back from the corner?
Yeah, according to Dave.
He's asking to move it back so they can have more visibility, and DOT says it's not needed. I mean, we have no control over that, and Dave, I encourage you to speak to DOT. It would probably be Mark Morgan or Scott Cole. You could speak to someone. What was the gentleman that wrote the sent you the letter?
Tony Tagliferi.
He's new, and I haven't met him yet. You could speak to him.
David, if you go on the online agenda, his letter's attached, and his contact information's there. If you need anything else, just let me know.
Yeah, I thought that was the same man, and Chris Whitley just told me it was not, that when they had that open, that public meeting or open discussion...
That's Stewart.
Okay, it was not the same person.
I have not met him yet. He's new, and I haven't met him yet.
He was worked for, I think he told me, I met with him. He brought the letter, but also wanted to talk. So he came over, and we met, and he said, I believe, if I'm recalling this correctly, he came from the city of Charlotte, working in transportation safety, the same line of work, but took this job with the NC DOT.
Number 21, consider attendance at the League of Municipalities City Beijing Conference.
I'm in.
I'm in. I don't know. I'm a maybe.
Oh, that's on a Saturday.
No, it starts on Wednesday, the 19th.
Starts on Wednesday, and you'll come home on Saturday morning.
I don't know. I'll have to let you know.
I'll let you know tomorrow.
I'll have to let you know.
Okay. And I need to know, just email me if I need to register anybody else for the meeting.
Yeah.
Not beside you all.
Thank you. Before we start around the table, I have received another award, a press release from the Government Finance Officers Association. This certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting has been awarded to the City of Albemarle by the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada for its comprehensive annual financial report. The certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition in the area of government accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by the government and its management. An award of financial reporting achievement has been awarded to the individuals or department designated by the government as primary responsible for preparing and awarding CAFR, which stands for their name. The CAFR has been judged by the impartial panel to meet the high standards of the program, which includes demonstrating a constructive spirit of full enclosure to clearly communicate its financial story and motivate potential users and users groups. Colleen, thank you very much, and... Yes, Mr. Ferris wants to say a couple words.
If Colleen Conroy, our finance director, would come forward, and I'll say a couple things. The mayor's too efficient. We just got the letter today, so we were going to do a big presentation at the next council meeting, but the mayor's just too good. He doesn't let anything sit. But just to say a few things about this, this is the Certified Annual Financial Report. It's actually the first time we've ever put this together and submitted it. So I've mentioned it a couple times during the budget process. I think Ms. Conroy has also mentioned it to council when she's talked about her departmental goals and activities. And I think we prefaced it all by saying, well, first of all, that it's just a tremendous amount of work to put it together and prepare it. So that was a huge accomplishment. And we prefaced it every time by saying, this is the first time, people don't usually get the award the first time, that what we do is put it together, and then GFOA provides input on where improvements can be made to your Certified Annual Financial Report. But we said it many times, basically, don't be expecting that we get it this year, but we'll keep working toward that. So this letter just came in today. Colleen came into my office in tears when she got the letter. Of course, I didn't know, that's why she's coming to my office, so I didn't know what in the world happened. And so this is just a huge accomplishment. This is really a tremendous accomplishment, especially with the complexity. We've said it before, Albemarle might be in the top 10% in population in the state, but in terms of financial complexity in our operations, when you factor in the traditional general fund activities, the electric fund, solid waste fund, a public housing fund, the power bill fund, water and sewer, it's a huge operation, and our staff has done a tremendous job in just the fact that they could prepare this submission and to receive it. I just can't stress it enough, it is online with, just to put it in perspective, we just received the RP3 award. Have you heard how rare that is and prestigious it is to get it? How competitive, how difficult it is to achieve? We talk about the Kalia accreditation for the police department. When that was received several years ago, we were maybe the 12th, less than 15 in the state of North Carolina had to receive that, and we were the smallest department. This is online with that kind of accomplishment. So just can't say enough about the finance staff and actually the staff of the city as a whole, because without proper financial controls and following those procedures, none of this is possible. So just want to commend Colleen, the entire finance staff, for having successfully achieved this award. Just to apply was a major accomplishment, and to get the award, like I said, Colleen came into my office in tears, and I didn't know what she was going to tell me.
Colleen will give you a chance to make a couple comments. Please, thank your staff for all they do.
Absolutely.
Thank you. It's been a long road, and I do have to give credit to some people who are not with the city anymore. Lindsey Carter really doggedly pursued getting all the statistical information, and without her, I don't think we would have made it here. Matt Smith was certainly vital in pulling things together and getting it together, but really the whole finance staff. You know, we don't have a big department, but we do the best we can, and we appreciate all the help from every department, because without all the departments doing their job, we can't do our job. So it's really something that I just am so proud to be able to say that we have for the very first time, and I thank everyone.
Thank you.
Great job.
Coming around the table, Mr. Ferris.
I do not have anything to add.
Mr. Townsend, Ms. Hughes.
Just one question on the 52 water treatment. Are we getting close to looking at an open house date for that?
Well, we were waiting right now on the elevator, and we're waiting on the dean to give us approval to move forward with the elevator. I guess we could do it without that being done, but I think we were trying to complete the entire project. It's totally up to council.
Yeah, so we could, what's remaining, there's a freight elevator that's in there. We're waiting for a substantial amount of rehab work needs to be done, but we can make arrangements for a tour at any point, an open house at any point.
I'd like for us to look at some dates or something.
We'll get some proposed dates.
I thought we looked, we did talk about this before, maybe waiting to after the summer.
I mean, we could do, yeah, I mean, we could look at September, maybe. I mean, of course, we're...
Why don't we look at September, but also if they have, we have a lot of construction going on, we might want to delay that. We don't want to go up there with a lot of it torn up.
Yeah. If we're in the middle of the elevator repairs during September, I would advise we kind of wait, but...
But if not, yeah, let's look at September. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anything further?
No, sir.
Mr. Aldridge?
Just a couple things. I guess two or three days ago, after our city posted on Facebook one of the restaurants that's released plans to come to Albemarle, I can candidly say, although I'm very excited about all the restaurants that are coming, since, excuse me, serving on this board since 2014, I don't think I've been asked more questions. The most pressing question I've had in my entire tenure up here is, when's Chick-fil-A coming? When's Chick-fil-A coming? Keeping our fingers crossed, everything works out great, but it's a great week. Not that I'm not very grateful for all the restaurants that are coming, because I think it's going to bring a great mix of things to our city that we've never seen before, but I'm super stoked and super excited about that. A couple of things I want to congratulate, former high school standout RJ Prince, graduate of Albemarle High School, and then went to North Carolina, did a great job in football. He signed this past week with the Pittsburgh Steelers to play football with them. Also, wanted to thank, I think this past Saturday was Denico Altris Football Camp, Second Annual Football Camp. He did it initially last year, and then I think he's playing with the Colts now. But it's great to see someone who makes it and doesn't forget his hometown, get his roots. I know it means a lot. It's probably an event that happens in these youngsters' lives they'll never forget. So I'm very thankful to Denico and for him doing that. The second, the last thing I want to talk about just for a few minutes is, you know, Councilmember Hughes and Hall brought it up a few minutes ago about the amount of overdoses we're seeing in our city and in our community, and it's very alarming. And just as one member of this council, I'm very alarmed. You know, I heard last night, we've had 22 in the last week. And this is the community that I love. This is the community that I've lived in my entire life. And so I want us collectively, because we're just one of seven on this board, it takes a community to come together and prevent these things. You know, over the last couple of weeks, we've had murders in the street, we've had home invasions. We've had a lot of stuff going on that you think, when you turn your news on at night, you think about it's in New York, or it's in Atlanta, or it's in Charlotte. It's right here in Albemarle. And, you know, we have a great police department here. We have great officers in our community, but they can't do it on their own. You know, we have to, we have to be very vigilant. We have to, if we see something, we have to say something. And there's a lot more good than there is bad. So I just want to, I didn't want to get on my soapbox, but I just want to say, if you see something out there, say something. You know, let's rid our communities of these people who come to destroy us. So that's all I got. Thank you.
Ms. Hall?
Couple things. The Forest Hills Parade on July 4th was great as usual. An adable and a shout out to the fire department. We were about halfway through the parade, and all of a sudden, you heard the fire truck leave, and the fire sirens going off, and somebody said, "Is everybody okay here?" And they left, and the question came very quickly then, is, are they coming back to turn the water on for the kids? And sure, they did. So a shout out to Sean, to your guys. I mean, they didn't forego those children who really wanted to play in the water. Somebody said, "Well, if they should have thrown, they should have thrown the tools back out to us before they left on that fire, so we could just turn them off." But thanks to that. And I hate to ask Kevin, because I don't really like putting people on the spot, but Kevin, will you walk, make your way up here? And as he's making his... No, but no, listen. When things happen, now, he doesn't have any idea what I'm about to do, but that's okay. When you work for the city, you got to be prepared, right, Kevin?
Yep.
Over the weekend, no, one night last week, I got a message of a question about an ordinance. And I immediately, I told the lady when I spoke with her that night that I would let, I would email Kevin and copy her. And I'm going to preface not who, not necessarily what, but it's something that, because we live in this age and stage of everybody doing things on this contraption, and because Facebook is so big, and people put things on there, giving them away, or selling them, or whatever, it's something that may hit again. And the person basically said, she wanted to know if we had an ordinance about leaving items. I'm going to use a couch, for instance, at the street, and putting, taking a picture of it and putting on the, whatever that Facebook or online free shop or whatever, all those marketplace. And there's a lot of them, and there's Stanley County and, I mean, there's all of them. And I said, you know, I don't know that we do, but I do know that if it's out there, it can't be out there for so long in that kind of certain amount of time. So Kevin, with that being said, so that if anybody gets it, or if anybody gets a question on, can we do this? Can you give us a synopsis on...
Kevin, do you want to answer that? You want to refer it to Michael, because I know it's not your area.
Yes.
Michael, how about you?
I can let Michael address that, but yeah, it's, we try to exercise some discretion with it, for sure.
But I will tell you that Kevin's response to me was fabulous, okay? Because he and I have given him before when I saw excessive amounts of stuff on the side of the street, okay?
So we're talking about, just to be clear, are we talking about things at the road that are there for collection, about trash or anybody? I mean, if they're at the side of the road, either somebody's going to pick it up and take it home and make it theirs, or their collection day is going to come.
Right.
One of the two things is going to happen. So if somebody were to come get it in advance, and I guess if somebody put it on their Facebook page, say it's out there, if you want it, you can get it.
Right.
I guess that's fine, because the point is for it to be gone anyway.
Right.
So large, people can put uncompacted household waste out next to their trash can. So that can be couches, furniture, other things. So that's part of our contract. If there's an excessive amount, like we've seen before, where somebody has moved out and just decided, not only do they have a trash collection service, they have maid service out at the road, where there's just things loose and whatnot out there, the combination of Public Works and the planning department will stay on it until it is corrected. And unfortunately, that's a more common problem than what we like to have to deal with, but it is something we deal with regularly. So if somebody sees something that's out there that's not right, contact Kevin, contact me, contact Ross, and we'll get it motioned.
And the reason I did it is, the question came to me, is there an ordinance which determines, and she's kept calling it a public nuisance, and I wasn't even going there, I was thinking about large, single items that were out there.
So if the ordinance has to do, is related to our solid waste, there's a certain amount, and a certain weight has to be put out.
Right.
So if that is in violation, that's when we go through this process that I described. So there is an ordinance to restrict what can happen. It doesn't keep people from putting it out, but we'll follow up and make sure it gets taken care of so that neighbors don't have to look at that.
That was my response, exactly. If you're going to put something out there a couple of days, if it's still there, we're going to consider that to be...
That's right.
...probably a nuisance, but, you know, a couple of days, sure.
Thank you. Just wanted my fellow council members to know that it's an issue that may show up on some of their social media. Thank you. Mayor?
Further?
Nope.
Ms. Dry?
Yes, one thing, just tagging on a little bit to Councilmember Aldridge, that role models are extremely difficult to find today. And these two young men, RJ Prince and Denico Altris, have taken steps to show that their community is important to them, and the children are important to them. We have to continue to give them our support and back them 100%. It's, I would imagine it could be an uneasy prospect to have, but I want to thank them so much for what they've done, and they have really created a buzz around this community. And I wish them well, and I wish them continued responses back into our community. That's all, Your Honor.
Mr. Whitley? No comment. Mr. Bramlett? Anyone in the audience have anything to come before council? Here and now, I'll entertain a motion that we go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143, 31811A, 1, 3, 4, 5, to prevent disclosure of confidential information, legal, economic development, and real estate.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Hall. Second by Councilmember Dry. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Motion carries. I'll entertain a motion that we go back into regular session. Hughes and Bramlett, all in favor, aye. Those opposed? I didn't hear no no's. Let Michael get caught up right in here. Paul, that back there?
She has the leaf, so I've got everything from time she...
Okay. All right.
Coming out of closed session, we have multiple items to make motion. Number one, I need a motion that we continue the public hearing for the Carolina Treetop LLC until our August the 6th meeting.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Dry, second by Councilmember Hughes. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Second, I need a motion that we set a public hearing for an economic development incentive on August the 6th.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Hall, second by Councilmember Hughes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And third, I need a motion to rescind the motion to drilling a well on Stony Gap Road that had a cap of $6,100, and allow staff to negotiate putting that well in without the cap. Motion by Councilmember Hall, second by Councilmember Bramlett. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Anything else to come before council? I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn to our next regular scheduled meeting on August the 6th.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Dry?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hall. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Anything else to come before council? I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn to our next regular scheduled meeting on August the 6th.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Dry?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hall. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.